This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. We're being recorded. I'd like to read some, an opening statement. When speaking, so we can more accurately record the activities of the meeting. All lines have been muted by the administrator to minimize additional noise and feedback. You may unmute your line at any time to request acknowledgement from the chair. Those who have signed in to the online platform may request acknowledgement by using the raise hand feature in the application. The staff will be monitoring the chat and raise hand functions throughout the meetings to ensure we do not overlook anyone wishing to participate in the discussion. It's certified that we have followed the approved procedures for the appropriate notice of this meeting and the meeting by which we are convening. I'm going to ask that you indicate, they're going to call, Mrs. Mueller is going to call the roll and ask that you indicate your presence by saying aye when your name is called during a roll call. Anyone who wishes to identify themselves following the roll call of members will be invited to do so. Ms. Mueller?
Okay, I'll be taking if you need to roll call. Mr. Parsons, I will unmute everyone. If you can change yourself after rehearsing part. I will be calling.
One second, Nicole. We're getting a lot of feedback. Can you hear? Can everyone hear?
It's much better now. There was a lot of feedback.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
This is going to be a more interesting meeting than I thought. Go ahead, Nicole. I mean, Ms. Mueller.
We're going to go ahead and take attendance. Charles City County, Mr. Coda. I think I saw Mr. Coda in attendance this morning. If you could please unmute yourself and let us know that you're here. Mr. Coda? Okay, we're going to move on. Chesterfield County, Mr. Carroll.
Maybe if we unmute everybody, the noise isn't too bad. It'll go quicker.
We'll give that a shot.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Okay, we're going to start over. Charles City County, Mr. Coda. Is Mr. Coda here? Chesterfield County, Mr. Carroll.
You should indicate that you're here by saying aye.
I see Mr. Carroll. He's not connected by audio.
Okay. Mr. Holland?
Mr. Holland?
I see Mr. Holland, but he is, thank you.
I heard aye, yes.
Mr. Winslow? Ms. Haley? City of Richmond, Mr. Addison?
Ms. Mueller?
Ms. Mueller?
Yeah.
Bill Coda is present. I had to call it on my phone.
Thank you.
And Mr. Engel from Chesterfield is on the phone as well.
Thank you. We're going to proceed with City of Richmond, Ms. Gray. Ms. Lynch? Ms. Newville?
Aye, present.
Mr. Hilbert? Mr. Jones? Ms. Morrison? Ms. Robertson? Butchland County, Mr. Lumpkins? Mr. Spoon Howard?
Aye, here.
Mr. Kilduff?
Aye, here. Todd Kilduff.
Ms. Laskelak? Hanover County, Mr. Davis? Mr. Peterson?
Aye, here.
Mr. Flag? And Ms. Richard? Henrico County, Mrs. O'Bannon?
Aye.
Mr. Thornton? Mr. Brennan? New Kent County, Ms. Page? Mr. Taylor? Mr. Evelyn? Calatane County, Mr. Nordvig? Mr. Williams? And Mr. Sharden?
Uh, Richard, I'm here.
Thank you.
David Williams here.
Thank you very much. Town of Akron, Mr. Hodges.
Here, aye.
Thank you. Mr. Spania? Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rutledge? GRTC Transit System, Mrs. Tim?
Aye, present.
Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean? Cadence College GRTC, Ms. Adams? Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann?
Aye.
Mr. Riblet? CTAC?
Mr. Riblet. Sorry about that.
CTAC, Mr. Basham? DRPT, Mr. Brule?
Aye.
Ms. Dubinsky?
Aye.
Federal Highway Administration, Mr. Nelson? FTA, Mr. Koenig? Ride Finders, Ms. Missdale?
Aye.
Ms. Ruffin? And the Virginia Department of Aviation, Mr. Burnett? If you would like to identify yourself to be included in the record, I invite you to do so now. This concludes our roll call. Mr. Chairman, I give it back to you.
Kevin Carroll from Chesterfield. I couldn't get the mic to work earlier.
Great, thank you, Mr. Carroll. Do we have a quorum, Mr. Secretary?
We do have a quorum. Ms. Mueller, we left up Mr. Duran from Federal Highways.
We did. I apologize. Mr. Duran?
Aye, present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Lumpkin is here.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I'd like to welcome you to this inaugural virtual meeting of the Richmond Regional Planning, Transportation Planning Organization. Want to ask your indulgence while the staff and I read some preparatory comments that were required to do before we get into the business part of the meeting. Since the governor declared the state of emergency on March 12th, 2020 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, state and local government bodies have been providing for the continuity of government by meeting remotely by telephonic or electronic means in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, the Commonwealth Emergency and Other Afflicable Laws Guidance provided by the Attorney General and their respective legal counsel. On April 22nd, the General Assembly approved a budget amendment to authorize all public bodies, including regional bodies, such as Plan RVA and Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, likewise to meet by electronic means without a physical quorum assembled together during a governor-declared state of emergency, as long as certain conditions are met, so as to provide for the continuity of governmental operations. The bylaws of the RRTPO Policy Board define a quorum of the body to be 14 of 27 total members. The 2020 COVID virus makes it impractical and unsafe, even potentially life-threatening, for a quorum of this size to physically assemble in one location pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22-3, 3708.2A3. Further, the virus makes it impractical and unsafe for the public and the agency staff to gather in the same location to participate in this meeting. The health, safety, and welfare of our community is of paramount importance. Therefore, we have determined the appropriateness of eligibility to conduct today's meeting of the RRTPO Policy Board electronically pursuant to the provisions of the Virginia Code Section 2.23708.2 and related legislation approved by the General Assembly of Virginia and in light of the governor's state of emergency declaration for COVID-19. The convening of the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, RRTPO, has been determined necessary in order to continue the necessary business of the organization. The matters included on the agenda address important essential matters of continuing the work of the government, and therefore it is appropriate to convene at this time. I will ask our attorney, Mr. Gregory, to read his legal opinion regarding bylaws.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Hodges. Appreciate the opportunity. Before proceeding, we must recognize that Article 5, Section 6 of the RRTPO's bylaws precludes conducting the agency's business through telephonic or electronic means where the members are not physically assembled. However, I have concluded as your legal counsel that the body may suspend this bylaw provision so that this and future meetings may be conducted in this manner. Article 5, Section 6 of the RRTPO's bylaws states in pertinent part, "No meeting during which MPO business is discussed shall be conducted through telephonic or electronic means where the members are not physically assembled." Article 5, Section 4 of the bylaws provides that parliamentary issues and those issues not addressed by the bylaws are governed by Robert's Rules of Order. Under RRO, Robert's Rules of Order, a body's bylaws may be suspended if the provisions to be suspended address matters of parliamentary procedure. Article 5, Section 6 is a matter of parliamentary procedure because it addresses meeting governance. Therefore, Article 5, Section 6 may be suspended in order to allow telephonic or electronic meetings in compliance with applicable state law. The body may assent proceeding in this manner if there is no objection. If there is an objection, then a motion to suspend Article 5, Section 6 of the bylaws properly seconded and approved by a vote of two-thirds of the members in attendance would allow the meeting to proceed. If there is no objection, the meeting will proceed. If there is an objection, then the question will be decided upon a member's motion and a roll call vote. If this is necessary, the clerk will be asked to conduct a roll call to determine the members present and then to conduct a roll call vote after the motion is made and properly seconded. Chairman Hodges, I defer back to you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory, Mr. Secretary, if you could unmute everyone. I'm going to say that unless I hear an objection, we will proceed with this meeting. I hear no objection. Therefore, you can mute everybody. Therefore, while we do not know the exact duration of the function in this matter until such time as it is deemed advisable to return to in-person meetings. At this time, we expect meetings to occur in electronic format through the current declaration or June 10th, 2020. The RRTPO staff provided notice of this meeting and the means by which we are virtually gathered to members of the public. Notice was provided on 27 April, 2020 through posting on Plan RVA website and on 27 April, 2020 by distribution of email notification to members, alternatives, and known interested parties, including the media. In order to comply with the provisions of Virginia law and to improve accessibility to discussions intended for today, this meeting will be recorded. Audiovisual recordings of the meeting will be posted on the Plan RVA website within 48 hours of this meeting. Any members of the public wishing to address the RRTPO Policy Board were invited to submit comments via email until the close of business one day prior to the meeting in order to be reviewed and addressed during this meeting, if necessary. Anyone participating as an observer during the meeting today may submit comments or questions at any time during the meeting via email or by using the online chat function of the meeting platform. These individuals who are observing by phone may be called upon to address the RRTPO Policy Board with their questions or comments. All comments and questions submitted during the meeting will be reviewed following the meeting and to the extent practical, responses may be provided or posted on the Plan RVA website. Mr. Secretary, if you could unmute everyone. Does anyone have any questions regarding this process for assuming effective facilitation of this meeting or how members of the public may participate? Not hearing any.
Mr. Chairman, I would maybe allow just a couple seconds in case people are muted and need to figure out how to turn that off.
Good point. I'm not hearing any at this point either. I don't hear any questions. All right. For your patience and further request that our secretary, Mr. Parsons, to read the procedure for electronic meetings, which we will be asked to put on. In other words, he's going to read procedures and you're going to be asked to approve those procedures by a roll call vote. The roll call vote, we understand, is necessary to use these electronic procedures. Thank you for your patience. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you. Follow along on the screen if you are able. Procedures for electronic meetings and notice of meetings. Notice of meetings of public bodies supported by Plan RVA will be given in accordance with applicable law and the body's bylaws. In general, notice will be provided at least 10 days prior to the scheduled meeting and include the proposed agenda and meeting materials, as well as confirmation of the date and time and instructions to access the meeting. This notice will be posted on the Plan RVA website, links to which will be distributed to all members, alternates, interested parties, and our media contact list, assuring that members of the body and the public are notified concurrently. Contents of this notice will include date and time of the meeting, electronic means by which the meeting will be held, and instructions for joining the meeting as a participant or observer, method by which the meeting agenda and materials can be accessed, and public participation process for meetings, including the methods by which comments may be provided by members of the public before, during, and after the meeting. Public participation. Members of the public are invited to participate in public meetings of Plan RVA, the RRTPO, and their respective committees. The following are new ways members of the public can participate in and follow the business of Plan RVA and the RRTPO during this time. Anyone wishing to participate as an observer in a public meeting may do so. They should register with Plan RVA staff to get access to the meeting instructions and may sign on online or dial in by phone. Anyone wishing to submit comments prior to the meeting may do so by email. Comments received by 5:00 PM the business day preceding the meeting will be provided to members of the public body and included in the administrative record. Members of the public may use the chat feature in the online platform to submit questions or comments during the meeting. These will be recorded and included in the administrative record. Finally, agendas will be modified to offer two opportunities for members to address the bodies during the meeting. At the beginning of the agenda, to address members regarding agenda items only, and at the end of the agenda, to raise any other issues not included in the day's meeting agenda, as is customary. The agenda format. In order to clearly communicate the electronic means by which the meeting will occur, the agenda itself will include the following information in addition to the regular order of business and discussion on action items. Notification of the electronic means for hosting the meeting, including access information. Public announcement made by the presiding officer, administrator, or clerk secretary at the beginning of the meeting. Certification that the procedures were followed to adequately notify the public. Roll call of those participating as a member of the body in the call. An invitation to others to identify themselves. A statement concerning public comments submitted via email or via online meeting platforms will be shared with members of the public body and included in the agency's administrative record. Opening the floor for any member of the public to address the body regarding any matter included on the agenda for the meeting. All planned agenda items. And finally, opening the floor for any member of the public to address the body regarding any matter determined to the body but not specifically included in the agenda. Voting. At the appropriate time, the chair will call upon members of the body to introduce a motion addressing the action item. Following a motion and a second, discussion may ensue, ultimately resulting in a call for a vote. Each vote taken during an electronic meeting must be a roll call vote with each member's name and vote recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Minutes. Minutes of each meeting shall conform to the normal standards of minutes recorded for the body. Additional documentation should include the fact that the meeting was held as an electronic meeting pursuant to the authority and reference to the specific disaster declaration, the type of electronic means by which the meeting was held, and each member of the public body who participated in the meeting. Other participants in the meeting as observers may identify themselves and if so, will be included in the record. In addition to written record of the meeting, audio/video recording will be posted within 48 hours of the meeting's conclusion on the Plan RVA website, along with the written records once approved. The body may approve the minutes of an electronic meeting at a subsequent electronic meeting or one that is held in person. Expiration. Procedures shall only take effect in the event of a state of emergency declaration pursuant to Virginia Code whereby electronic means of hosting meetings of the public body is the only practical way to continue the conduct of the organization and achieve other objectives to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community and the members' bodies, bodies, members, and staff. This memorandum certifying the action to members of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, and standing committees from Martha Heater, Executive Director of Plan RVA concerning electronic meeting procedures for Plan RVA and the RRTPO. Background. Plan RVA has been coordinating with Eric Gregory, legal counsel to the regional commission, to identify the best path forward for conducting agency public meetings in light of the March 12th, 2020 state of emergency declaration by Governor Northam. Recommendations from the federal and state government regarding social distancing and limitations on gatherings of 10 or more individuals to support the national, state, and local efforts to reduce the spread of the coronavirus, COVID-19, during the current pandemic. We recognize the importance of the public bodies to which we provide staff support in the decision-making and approval process for federal and state administered programs. The following memorandum provides a brief overview of the recent action taken by the General Assembly and the implications for continued convening of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization, to which the Plan RVA staff provides support, and the respective committees of both organizations during the state of emergency declaration. General Assembly actions summarized. On April 22nd, 2020, the General Assembly approved legislation that allows all public bodies, including regional public bodies, to meet virtually during governor-declared emergencies. The measure describes the circumstances in which virtual meetings are permitted without the requirement to convene a physical quorum during the current COVID-19 declaration and future declarations that merit its intent. The following conditions must be met in order to exercise the provisions of this measure. One, the nature of the declared emergency makes it impracticable or unsafe for the public body or governing board to assemble in a single location. Two, the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact the business statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the public body and the discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. The public body shall make available a recording or transcript of the meeting on its website. And, four, the nature of the emergency, the fact that the meeting was held by electronic communication means, and the type of electronic communication means by which the meeting was held shall be stated in the minutes of the public body. Further, the new authority requires the following public notice and access. One, notice to the public using the best available method, given the nature of the emergency, which notice shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of the public body. Two, arrangements for public access to the meeting through electronic means, including, to the extent practical, video conferencing technology. If the means of communication allows, provide the public with an opportunity to comment. And three, public bodies must otherwise comply with provisions of Section 2.2-3708.2 of the Code of Virginia. Relevance to Plan RVA and the RRTPO. We have reviewed various assessments of current provisions in Virginia Code and the more recent guidance provided following the General Assembly's actions on April 22nd, 2020, and consulted with our legal counsel to make the following determination and recommendations to the members of Plan RVA and the RRTPO. After careful review of items that were scheduled for inclusion or are customarily included in agendas of regular meetings of Plan RVA, the RRTPO, and their respective body subcommittees, we believe that it is imperative to convene members of these bodies to advance specific decisions that will assure the continuity of operations, functions, and purposes of these organizations. In light of the current state of emergency declaration and ban of gatherings of 10 or more individuals and recommendations to implement social distancing practices where possible, we believe it is imprudent to convene a meeting of the members of Plan RVA or the RRTPO or their respective body's subcommittees for in-person meetings to conduct the business of these organizations. Therefore, we believe it is appropriate to exercise authority provided by the recent General Assembly actions to convene virtual meetings of Plan RVA, the RRTPO, and their respective committees to address essential matters. In anticipation of this newly granted authority, Plan RVA staff members have been working to deploy tools useful in the administration of virtual meetings and have developed procedures for assuring compliance with the Code of Virginia, the governor's executive orders related to the state of emergency declaration, the opinion released by the Office of the Attorney General on March 20th, 2020, and our own commitment to open access to and transparency in the conduct of governmental business. We have created the following procedures, practices, and guidance documents with the intent of preserving the integrity of open access and transparency in this time and in support of our ongoing pursuit of increased public awareness and engagement in the efforts led by Plan RVA and the RRTPO. Members of Plan RVA took action on April 9th, 2020 to adopt a policy expressly providing for remote participation of members. While the action considered existing provisions of the Virginia Code and Freedom of Information Act, it provided a useful platform for staff to begin exploring options to provide to commissioners for remote participation in meetings. Plan RVA now holds a subscription to both GoToMeeting and GoToWebinar, which are useful tools to convene virtual meetings, each with features beneficial to information sharing and meeting facilitation. Staff is learning the benefits of both platforms and the likely utility for convening meetings of our public bodies. Staff has provided guidance materials to support access to the platforms for both members of the public bodies we support, as well as members of the general public and stakeholders. In addition, we have drafted procedures for conducting virtual meetings that comply with the regulation and guidance regarding electronic meetings, which are enclosed. The requested action. While we have designed these procedures to suit the individual needs and purposes of the public bodies we support, we have intentionally designed them to be consistent across the agency. We believe this will more strongly support open access among members of the public interested in following the interested in following the work of Plan RBA and the ROTPO during this time and beyond. This consistency will also aid in our own operational streamlining to assure consistency across the agency in how we conduct our business. We intend to continue the practices that make sense beyond the current State of Emergency Declaration, and would like to continue to implement the strategies that encourage public awareness of and involvement in the regional decision-making process. This is consistent with the intent of the Plan RBA Strategic Planning Framework and the vision of the Public Outreach and Engagement Committee, as well as the Public Engagement Plan adopted by the ROTPO. We are submitting these policies and procedures for consideration and approval as appropriate. The schedule below outlines the proposed timeline for each of the bodies to review and respond to the recommended procedures. We hope that ongoing review and improvement of these procedures will help staff to learn from these new practices, and that we can increase opportunities to engage with the public even during emergencies such as we are currently experiencing. At this time, we expect these procedures to be in effect during the current declaration through June 10th, 2020, and potentially extended beyond the expiration of the current declaration. The staff recommendation is that staff recommends approval. The action requested from the ROTPO Policy Board is that the following resolution is presented for ROTPO Policy Board Review and Action. Resolve that the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Policy Board adopts these policies and procedures to guide coordination and function of electronic meetings. Be it further resolved, that staff will review and improve procedures as new information and tools are available.
So is everyone unmuted?
Everyone is unmuted unless they have their mute on.
Are there any questions about the procedures for electronic meetings that Mr. Parsons has read? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Page, I move.
This is Pat O'Bannon. I second it.
Did you get the motion and second, Ms. Mueller?
I did not get the motion. I got Mrs. O'Bannon who seconded.
Kenova Peterson made the motion.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Are there any... If there aren't any questions, then I'll ask Ms. Mueller to call a roll call vote on the motion. Ms. Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ROTPO Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item 4, Electronic Meeting Procedures of Plan RBA and ROTPO. Please cast your vote and call. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Beg your pardon?
Mr. Holland, please cast your vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Winslow. City of Richmond, Ms. Newville.
Aye.
New Kent County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mrs. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson?
Oh, Pete, I misunderstood you. Aye.
Thank you. Henrico County, Mrs. O'Bannon.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Go ahead, Ms. Mueller.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Capital Region Airport Commission, Mr. Rutledge. I'm sorry, he's not here. We're going to move on. Tim.
Aye.
Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean. Secretary of Transportation, Ms. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we missed... Yes, Ms. Page is here, as well as Mr. Carroll. I saw his note in the chat.
Thank you.
And Mr. Engel from Chesterfield as well. I vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Engel.
Patricia Page, I vote aye.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
And just for the record, Kevin Carroll will talk.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Is there anyone who has not yet an opportunity to vote? The chair is going to say the motion carried. I'm going to move... I'm now going to move to administrative matters. Approval of the ROTPO Policy Board meeting agenda from last month. You've had the information. Any questions, changes? If not, is there a motion?
A move, we approve. This is Pat O'Bannon.
Thank you. Second.
Patricia Page.
Ms. Page, thank you for the second. Ms. Mueller, can you vote on the motion?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item A2, approval of ROTPO Policy Board Meeting Agenda. Please cast your vote when called. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Aye.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newville.
Aye.
New Kent County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Mrs. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Mrs. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig.
I think he left the meeting.
I think he left. He might be trying to rejoin. Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
Capital Region Airport Commission, I'm sorry, I keep reading that. I'm going to scratch that out. GRC, Ms. Julie Tim.
Aye.
Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean. And Secretary of Transportation, Ms. Mann. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I believe I omitted A1, Approval of the ROTPO Policy Board Meeting Agenda. Are there any questions on the agenda or any amendments that members would like to have? Not hearing any. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
Isn't that what we just did?
No, I'm afraid. Well, tell us, Madam, Mr. Secretary, what we just did.
My understanding was that we just did the agenda, and now we're moving on to the minutes, A2.
I stand corrected. I actually didn't skip anything, and you voted on the meeting agenda, and now we're voting on the March 5th, 2020 Policy Board Minutes. Sorry for the confusion. Are there any changes to the minutes? Not hearing any. Is there a motion?
A move, we approve the minutes from the last meeting. This is Pat O'Bannon.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bannon. Seconded by Ms. Page. Ms. Mueller, would you call the roll?
Thank you. We're voting on the meeting minutes. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland. Mr. Holland?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newville.
Aye.
New Kent County, Mr. Spoonhour.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig. Not sure if he's here, if he's with us. Mr. Nordvig? Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRC, Ms. Julie Tim.
Aye.
Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean. Mrs. Dean? And Secretary of Transportation, Ms. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mueller, we need to add Mr. Engel from Chesterfield County.
Thank you.
I vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. I'm going rule that the motion carried, and we have approved the minutes. Moving on to Item A3, we split up our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on the May 7th, 2020 agenda only. There'll be an opportunity later in the agenda for general comments, but if there are any comments from the public on the May 7th, 2020 agenda, Mr. Secretary, do we have any comments? Or does the public have any comments?
We are not aware of any on the staff side. I would ask if anybody on the phone from the public would like to share comments.
Not hearing any. I'm going to move on to Item 4, the ROTPO Chairman's Report, which will be brief. I hope you're all staying safe, and we thank you for helping to maintain the continuity of government with this meeting. Now, I would like to ask to move on to Item 5, the ROTPO Secretary's Report. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you. I'm going to put everybody else on mute. The Secretary's Report, I wanted to go through, this was in the agenda packet, which is posted on the website and was sent directly to everyone. We are, even in this situation, making progress on many of our work tasks, including the Long Range Transportation Plan, the Greater RBA Transit Vision Plan, the Ashland-Trolley Line Study, our update of the Regional Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, as well as the Ashen Complete Streets Pilot Project. Other projects we have been involved with are staffing and maintaining the Active Transportation Work Group, planning, serving on the planning team, APA, the American Planning Association Virginia Chapter Conference, Smart Scale Round 4. We worked with each of you, as well as submitting regional projects for pre-applications. Those were submitted April 17th, and we are looking forward to feedback from VDOT over the next couple of months. And the other item that will be for your consideration next month is the Federal Fiscal Year '21 Unified Planning Work Program. TAC will be discussing that next week and will hopefully send a recommendation to you for consideration. The Work Status Report was included in your packet. I'm not going to go through that. We need to take any questions either audibly or through the chat or after the meeting. If you have any questions, I'm just scrolling through that now. That's including our financial status, and it looks like everything is in good shape with our financial records. I do want to let you know that we may be coming back to you next month with a one final FY '20 budget work program amendment to make sure that each of our work tasks is covered for the final 30 days of the month. Other than that, I think that one of the things I wanted to raise for everyone's information were that since all this happened, April 22nd, House Bill 1541, the Central Virginia Transportation Authority did pass with a couple changes. The governor had some recommendations. They went back to the House and Senate and were accepted. So that is, that's exciting news for the region, especially in a time like this. I was sharing with another group last week that the last projections that were done were in March. So while we may not see the revenues collected that were projected in March because of changes in fuel sales and sales of... For the sales tax income, we do expect to see revised projections sometime later this summer as we move towards a date. One of the things that did change with that, the CBTA, is that the sales and use tax that would be the contribution to the revenues will not take place until October of 2020. The fuel tax contributions will continue to be in effect July 1 of 2020. The final note, Items 5, 5D, we are working with VDOT. The tip, RSTP, and CMAC processes are... The development process is delayed indefinitely. We are working with VDOT to make sure that everything on our end is ready to go, and we are ready to resume that review and adoption process for new updates to all of those grant programs and allocation cycles. And then finally, I wanted to raise, I had a number of comments from members of this body regarding VDOT traffic counts, specifically with Hanover County and Chesterfield County, that traffic counts were taking place right now, and there was a request to VDOT, and maybe Mr. Mann can address this later, whether those counts could be extended so that we can collect some good data in terms of as work restrictions are lifted or commuting patterns change as we move into the fall. We'd like to catch those with the traffic counters that are currently out. So that's something that we're continuing to track. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to unmute everyone now.
Anyone? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Any questions at this point on Mr. Parsons' presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add regarding the traffic counts, that they did also do them in New Kent County several weeks ago, and placed the call to VDOT, I think Marshall Wynn, and he said that they were scheduled... They had contracted them to do that, do the count, and so they recognized that we were going through a pandemic, and that's the response I got.
Is that Mr. Mann? I'm sorry.
Mr. Hodges, I'm available if you'd like. This is Mr. Mann.
Oh, I think you'll have an opportunity to comment later on the agenda that a member commented.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's Kenova Peterson.
Mr. Peterson.
Okay, I brought this subject also, not just to Ted Parsons, but also to Dean Lynch with VACO, and they followed up, and I will share with the committee the response that I got back on this. This was from Joe Lurch, and it said, "Joanne Maxwell, VDOT Policy Office spoke with the Richmond District Administrator, and he confirmed that they are going forward with regularly-scheduled traffic counts, but only for the purposes of documenting the impact of COVID-19 and to adjust work zone hours based on traffic." Additionally, he said they will not be using these counts for the purposes of funding allocation, but rely on historic counts prior to the pandemic. I asked if that would be the policy for all the district... I asked if that would be the policy for all the districts, and she said that she thought that would be the case. She also said to reach out to her again if we get more questions, concerns from our members. Wanted to share that with the rest of the members of, of our formation.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Um, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mann, we'd like to address that later when you have your presentation. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. Thank you, sir.
Any other, um, member comments on Mr. Parsons', uh, the Secretary's Report? Not hearing any. I'm planning to move forward on new business. At our last, at our last meeting, uh, there was a discussion between, um, Charles City County and New Kent County about possibly, uh, making a change that would require our RTPO Policy Board change regarding, uh, a vote on the vice chairmanship. Mr. Coda, have you, um, made a decision on what, whether you'd like to go forward as the vice chair or make a change?
No, sir. I would be honored to serve as vice chair.
That, that's wonderful news. I don't, in that case, do we need a vote? Uh, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, sir. That would be excellent.
Do I hear, uh, a motion to approve Mr. Coda as the vice chair through June thirtieth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Did you get a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair, Cynthia Newbill.
Ms. Newbill carried the motion.
And I'm sorry, can you state again who made, who made the motion and who seconded? Ms. Mueller, who do you have?
I have Ms. Newbill, and I'm not sure if I'm for the motion, and I don't know who seconded it. Could not make that out.
Yeah, I made the motion. This is Cynthia Newbill.
Cynthia, Ms. Newbill made the motion. And I heard Ms. Page made the second.
Yes, sir.
Then I'll ask that we have a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The RTPO Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B one, election of RTPO Policy Board Vice Chairman. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Uh.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Carroll votes aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
I believe Ms. Tim has left the meeting. Uh, Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean.
Um, this is Julie Tim. I haven't left the meeting.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Tim. Go ahead and cast your vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dean. And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, the chair's gonna rule that the motion carried, all ayes. Um, we're moving on, and congratulations, Mr. Coda. Uh, moving on to, moving on to item B two, TIP Amendment, GRTC, a bunch of zeros, expansion articulated vehicles. Uh, Mr. Bushing.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, this first item I have for you is TIP Amendment eighty-three. This item is a request from GRTC to add a new project to the FY eighteen, FY twenty-one tip for the purchase of articulated vehicles. Uh, the project will use fifty-three oh seven funds, and it would be obligating six hundred and seventy-two thousand in FY twenty-one. No TPO allocated funds are involved with the project. TAC has reviewed the, uh, proposed amendment and has recommended approval. Today we are requesting action on this item. The action would have two parts. First, it would add the project to the FY eighteen, FY twenty-one tip along with the requested obligation. Secondly, it would note that the project is exempt from conformity as a minor expansion of the fleet. Uh, that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bushing? Not hearing any. Do I hear a motion?
Supervisor Holland makes a motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Holland.
Ms. O'Bannon, uh, seconds the motion.
Seconded by Ms. O'Bannon. Uh, Ms. Mueller, will you call a roll?
Thank you. The RTPO Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B two, TIP Amendment. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Aye.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Carroll votes yes.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhauer. Mr. Spoonhauer. Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
Richmond Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Ms. Dean. And last but not least, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The chairman rules, uh, motion passed, um, uh, all ayes. Uh, we'll now move on to I, item three, uh, Mr. Bushing.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item I have for you is RSTP CMAC New Project Prioritization. I'll start with the RSTP program, uh, as it is the larger of the two. So the Surface Transportation Block Grant is a flexible source of funding for transportation improvement. Touches on everything from transit, bike pit facilities and new roads. Uh, each year under the FAST Act, the RRTPO receives around twenty million dollars in STBG funds to allocate the project. As Chad mentioned earlier, um, development of the tip is currently suspended. So because we have this delay, what we're recommending is a slightly different process from what we've done in the past. Um, new projects would be prioritized, and we'll continue to work with district staff to then, uh, develop the draft allocations, which we'll bring back to you for a vote when we're able to advance new allocations. So the projects for RSTP funding were initially scored by a team of TPO, VDOT and the RPT staff using the selection guidelines. Uh, these scored projects were then presented to TAC, which recommended the prioritization that's included in your agenda packets on page thirty-three. The second program is the CMAC program. That's the Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. Uh, as the name implies, these funds are dedicated to improving air quality in the region. Um, as we discussed a couple of months back, the region is currently in attainment for all national ambient air quality standards. Um, however, we previously didn't meet the nineteen ninety-seven eight-hour ozone standard. Um, so we receive this funding, uh, kind of as a carryover from that time when we weren't meeting the standard, and it's approximately eight million dollars each year. So, uh, in terms of the prioritization, these projects were evaluated by VDOT's environmental staff, looking at the cost effectiveness of pollution reduction. Uh, the focus is primarily on NOx and VOCs, since those are the precursors for ozone. Um, TAC received the scored projects and recommended the prioritization that's included in your agenda packets on page thirty-four. So today we are requesting action, um, to approve the prioritization of the FY twenty-one, FY twenty-six projects as presented. Um, this will allow us to move forward with developing the draft allocations for adoption whenever we're able to advance new allocations. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Bushing? If not, is there a motion?
A move, we approve.
Ms. O'Bannon moves approval.
Supervisor Holland moves a second there.
Mr. Holland seconds. Uh, Ms. Mueller, can you call a roll on the motion?
The RTPO Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B three, RSTBG CMAC Project Prioritization. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Uh.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Peterson?
Henrico County.
Aye.
Thank you. Henrico County, Ms. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Ms. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
And Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you. Um, chairman rules that the resolution was adopted, all ayes. The next item, uh, Air Quality Conformity Report, again, Mr. Bushing.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, this item is the Richmond and Tri-Cities Regional Conformity Report. Um, just to give you a brief overview, conformity is essentially demonstrating compliance with the Clean Air Act. Uh, in the Richmond region, we're required to undergo conformity every time we adopt a new tip or long range plan. Um, as I just mentioned, we are in attainment for all standards, uh, at this time. However, we still have to undertake this conformity analysis for the nineteen ninety-seven eight-hour ozone standard. So as part of the conformity process, uh, we were required to conduct an interagency consultation. So that brings together federal, state and local agencies, including those in Tri-Cities, to meet to review the analysis and the approach. Uh, this meeting was held at the TPO offices on February eleventh, and it was led by VDOT staff. Uh, at that meeting, several changes were requested. We received several others in emails from TAC members afterwards, and those have all been incorporated into the final report. Uh, in addition to the consultation, this report also underwent a public engagement process. So we had a thirty-day public comment period from February seventeenth to March eighteenth. Uh, there was a website set up with a comment form in the draft report. It was shared via social media and emails to interested parties. We also had an advertisement in the time dispatch and in the free press for the tip. Um, and if you went to the link that was in there, this was also linked at that site. Um, there was an open house initially scheduled for February, or excuse me, for March seventeenth. However, we were required to cancel it as part of the COVID nineteen, uh, restrictions that were implemented. Uh, we didn't receive any additional comments from the public engagement process. So today what we're requesting is that the Policy Board approve the Richmond and Tri-Cities Regional Conformity Report as presented. Uh, the Tri-Cities MPO is scheduled to adopt the report at their next meeting. VDOT will then send the report to FHWA for a final review and conformity determination. Um, if that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bushing? If not, is there a motion?
A move, the resolution. Ms. O'Bannon.
Ms. O'Bannon moves. Was there a second?
Bill Coda seconds.
Mr. Coda seconded. Uh, Ms. Mueller, can you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. The RTPO Policy Board will now be voting on Agenda Item B four, Air Quality Conformity Report. Charles City County, Mr. Coda.
Aye.
Chesterfield County, Mr. Holland.
Uh.
Mr. Winslow.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Engel.
Aye.
City of Richmond, Ms. Newbill.
Aye.
Butchland County, Mr. Spoonhauer.
Aye.
Mr. Lumpkins.
Aye.
Hanover County, Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Henrico County, Mrs. O'Bannon.
Aye.
New Kent County, Mrs. Page.
Aye.
Powhatan County, Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Town of Ashland, Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
GRTC, Ms. Tim.
Aye.
RMTA. Sorry, moving on, and Secretary of Transportation Designee, Mr. Mann.
Aye.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, the chair rules that the motion passed with all ayes. We're now, now moving to Agency and Committee Reports, item C, and ask that Mr. Mann, uh, uh, give us an update on VDOT.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Uh, first I'll address the traffic counts, um, and just as was previously noted, we are continuing to do our traffic counts, but we are just using those as a baseline for COVID nineteen responses. Um, apologize, I got some dogs in the background there. Um, we will not be using that data for any project reasons whatsoever. For any project reasons, we'll be going back to our last pre-COVID nineteen studies, so that'll be the data we're using for that. As far as our global update, the CTV meeting, um, March meeting, the only action was a location approval for Route six thirty-six on Nash Road in Chesterfield. April meeting, there was no workshop due to the COVID nineteen issue, and the virtual meeting, um, in April, no actions directly impacting Richmond District. Uh, CTV next meeting is gonna be in Salem District, uh, still working on the, um, time and location on that. It's gonna be a virtual meeting again. May nineteenth, the workshop begins at ten AM. And May twentieth, the action meeting begins at nine AM. Uh, Chad already gave us a pretty good update on the General Assembly, CBTA and Omnibus Bill. I don't really have anything to add other than what he's already said. Smart Scale Round Four, the pre-application portal closed on April seventeenth, uh, was extended from April third, which was the original date. Richmond District applicants submitted ninety-six pre-applications, which is approximately twenty percent of the statewide pre-applications. Uh, total of four hundred and eighty-four were submitted statewide. Final Application Portal reopens on June first and closes August third at five PM. As pre-applications are screened in prior to June one, applicants will be notified so they can begin working on their final applications. Uh, Six-Year Improvement Plan Development, uh, still waiting on all the impact, the revenue projections, uh, currently being analyzed. Central Office is developing a FAQ regarding changes and updates to the, the schedule. And there's a potential for the update to occur toward the end of twenty twenty, and we'll provide updates on those as soon as they're available. The I ninety-five corridor study, really no change since the last update. The capital improvement will be presented to the CTV in the summer of twenty twenty. The capital improvement will be presented to the CTB in the summer of 2020. On the I-64 corridor study, data collection is currently underway. First round of public meetings has been postponed until this month. Still waiting on the dates on those, but they will be virtual meetings, and public comments will be obtained via online surveys. There'll be a total of three rounds of public meetings for the 64 study, May, June, and late summer of 2020 are the anticipated dates. And ranked recommendations are to be developed in the summer and submitted to CTB in the fall. And we do not have any upcoming public hearings or citizen information meetings other than the I-64 public meeting if we don't have the days yet. That's all I have, Mr. Hodges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Any members have questions of Mr. Mann?
Yes, this is Neil Spoonhour from Butchland County. Mr. Mann?
Go ahead.
Is there a place where we can find out where the last study was done for our locality?
If you reach out to me or any of my staff, we can get that information for you and get you pointed in the right direction.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Not hearing any. I'll ask Mr. Bruhl if she could report on DRPT. Mr. Bruhl?
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. Thank you, Mr. Hodges. A few updates from DRPT. We've been very focused over the past month on the allocation of the Federal CARES Act funding. There was nationally about $25 billion for public transportation that came to us through the Federal CARES Act. About $456 million of that came to Virginia agencies. The large agencies like GRTC received that funding directly from the Federal Transit Administration, but the state is responsible for about $100 million of that funding that goes to small urban transit agencies and our rural agencies. Those funds were allocated by the CTB at their meeting on April 21st. We are encouraging all of our transit agencies to conserve the use of that CARES Act funding. It is 100% federal funding. We're asking folks to prioritize operations because of the uncertainty and continue in the level of state and local funding that may be available in the year ahead. Mr. Mann already touched on the six-year improvement program for our transit agencies. Obviously, the carrying forward of our fiscal year '20 program into '21 does come with some uncertainty since we do an annual grant application process with them. But we are continuing to look at that and waiting for some new revenue forecasts before we potentially do some updates to that later this year. We'll be communicating information specific to the transit agencies later on. In terms of our state-supported bus and rail programs, our Amtrak service has been significantly reduced as a result of the impact of COVID-19 with limited service, limited state-supported service to Renex, Norfolk, Newport News, with Richmond being served by that Norfolk and Newport News daily train. For our Virginia Breeze, that's our state-supported inner-city bus service, that service was suspended effective April 10th. We are in the process and are continuing to work on the contract for new service that would provide Virginia Breeze connections through Richmond. And we are hopeful that we will get to launch that service later this year once we have a better understanding of what's gonna happen with the COVID-19 situation. The last thing that I'll mention, and this is information that I just received yesterday, is the May CTB meeting is going to be a one-day meeting, and it's going to be a virtual meeting on May 20th. So I know that that's information that's not yet updated on the CTB webpage, but that is my understanding of what the CTB schedule will be for May. And that concludes our report for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Bruhl. Are there any questions for Mr. Bruhl? Not hearing any. I'll move on to other business. D1, the RTPO member comments. This is an opportunity for members to comment on something that is not on the agenda. Are there any comments from RTPO members? Not hearing any. Are there, moving on to Item D2, are there any future meeting topics, suggestions beyond what's in the report? I would like to add one that relates to, we voted on RSTP and CMAC project prioritizations, and there was a reference to criteria. I think at some point, and I understand Mr. Parsons has that in mind, that we have an opportunity to have a presentation of how projects are ranked, what's the scoring system and prioritization with the revenues that are expected, hopefully to come in. I think it'd be good for members to understand how projects are prioritized in the region.
Yes, sir. I've got that noted.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Not hearing any. I'm moving on to Item D3, public comment period. This is open-ended. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Secretary, did you get any comments?
I have not.
Anyone wish to? Excuse me. Then unless I hear otherwise, and next meeting is June 4th, it'll be a virtual meeting, or it's planned to be virtual at this time, where we'll take up fiscal year '21, '24 TIP, the TIP Amendment VDOT is requesting, and the greater RVA Transit Vision Plan. Unless I hear any objection, this meeting's over. Thank you for participating, and stay safe. Have a good day.
Good day. Great job, Mr.